Good morning. I want to welcome, hello everybody, there we go. I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, April 29th, 2025 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have you all here in attendance today. I know that we have several people watching online and we appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to join us for Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome Cheryl Wright with our National Day of Prayer Denton Task Force. And Cheryl's a friend of ours for many years and she's going to lead us in our, lead us in our prayer and Teresa will lead us in our pledges. If you'll please stand. And I would like to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. Go right ahead.
Our precious Heavenly Father, as we come with praise today, we praise you for the God that you are and for the Holy One that you will forever be. And you are worthy of our honor and our praise. I thank you for your forgiveness and for the loving kindness that you show us. Teach us, teach us, oh Lord, to forgive the way that you forgive and love the way that you love. Thank you for sending Jesus to pay for our price on Calvary and the transgressions that we've committed. Father, we ask that you, we would strive to be more like you every day. I pray for Judge Eads that you would impart to him the wisdom that he needs to preside over this court today. I pray for Commissioner Ryan, for Commissioner Faulkner, for Commissioner Edmondson. Father, give them the wisdom and discernment and understanding to carry them through this day. Help them as they make decisions on issues before them, the decisions that will reach beyond the court and into the lives of those that they touch. And Jehovah Rapha, I ask that you keep Commissioner Mitchell wrapped in your loving and healing hands. Father, we have seen Bobby live your commandment to love one another. And we ask that you help us to show her love, the way that she has shown so many of us love. Following that example that she has lived, let us show others the heart of Jesus. God, we ask that Jehovah Shama would be there to cover Bobby and her family. Help them as they learn to navigate life without their well-loved husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. Hold them close, give them peace in their confusion and in comfort that you, only you can give. I pray these things in the holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me to the pledge to the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Well, thank you Cheryl and I want to thank everybody for all the kind prayers that y'all have been sending us for this last week. And Commissioner Mitchell is doing well and, and sends her regards and she is out of the hospital. Thank you, which is great news. And so anyway, I want to send comments on behalf of Commissioner Mitchell that she hears and feels all the prayers that everyone has been sending her away and that of the family as well. So I just wanted y'all to continue to lift her up as she makes a speedy and complete recovery. Let's go to item one, which is for items not listed on the agenda and we have do, we do have one individual registered to speak today. And that's Mr. Ernest Lienberger. And where are you sir? Good morning. Good to see you. If you'll come forward here. Mr. Lienberger, I would remind you that we have a limit of three minutes for, for public comments for items not listed on the agenda. But we're glad to have you. Thank you, sir.
I'll cut it down. Yes, sir.
And I'll be happy to set a stopwatch for you.
Thank you.
Good. Go right ahead.
I stand to introduce myself, Ernest Lienberger, a retired naval officer living in Denton County, a 29-year employee of Texas Instruments and a Democratic candidate for the seat of the U.S. House of Representatives. On top of the respect I have for you all, as office holders, Commissioner Bobby Mitchell has earned my respect as one I have seen put her heart into the community. I was deeply saddened to hear news of her injury and personal loss. The scale of it is unfathomable to me. My prayers continue in support. As members of this court, I applaud all that you do as stewards for the good management of the county and shepherds of the people for their safety needs and convenience. First, on voting centers, I had a lot to say, but to abbreviate, I will ask you to please take action on this opportunity to remove one life obstacle for our neighbors and constituents. Secondly, as a citizen, I stay involved with several of our hero organizations like CCA, United Way, Our Daily Bread, and more. I was heartstruck to learn that Love Packs of Denton was closing their doors. I'm a member of the Board for Span and Meals on Wheels of Denton County. Meals on Wheels fills, fills a hugely important service by providing healthy meals to seniors daily in both congregate and in-home bound settings. Span runs a necessary and beloved on-call transportation service, helping veterans to get to the VA hospital, patients to dialysis, seniors to the grocery store, and more. This service is efficient, important, necessary, understood, and trusted by the community. Span has established strong relationships between drivers and clients, meeting the needs of the community for as far as we can stretch the dollar. Years ago, my mother was a Meals on Wheels volunteer. I participate in fundraising and also sponsoring a senior personally. We actually have seniors on the waiting list for Meals on Wheels. How they are managing, I'm not sure. But I stepped up with a monthly donation sufficient to take one more off the waiting list. Your help is urgently needed in the matter of an ILA for federal funding designated for Span that requires your attention. This funding has been directed from the federal government to help meet this need, gets funneled through your stewardship to get to Span. I'm sure that you are aware of this pending action and the urgency of its need. On behalf of Span, Meals on Wheels, and the large contingent of veterans, seniors, and other constituents they serve, I ask you to do your part and make it so. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Appreciate your public input. Let's go to item 3A, which is approval of a resolution recognizing Ray Rose's retirement. Mr. Rose, if you'll come forward. Well, good morning, Ray. It's good to see you this morning. If you'll stand right there and what we'll do is I will read this resolution and then we will make a few comments and we'll have Kevin say something and then we'll let you have the last word. How's that go? Or not. If you don't want to speak, you're welcome to say thank you or, or goodbye and see you later. After a while, crocodile and all that good stuff. So, all right, so this, let's go to this resolution here. Thank you for being here this morning. Thank you for investing your career here. This is a resolution honoring Ray Rose for 16 years of service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the 29th day of April 2025, considers the following resolution. Whereas Ray Rose has been a dedicated and valued employee of Denton County, serving in the Department of Technology Services since June 16th, 2008. And will retire on April 30th, 2025, after over 16 years of service. Whereas throughout his tenure, Ray supported and maintained the county server infrastructure, ensuring the reliability, security, and availability of critical applications and services throughout the organization. These include public safety systems such as the servers and applications supporting 911 operations, which require the highest levels of uptime and responsiveness. Whereas Ray provided excellent customer service consistently seeing technical issues through resolution. He remained calm and steady in high-pressure situations, earning a reputation for his reliability and level-headedness when it mattered most. His responsiveness and commitment to, to end users made him a trusted partner to departments across the county. Whereas under his leadership as server operations manager, the server team became one of the most cohesive, responsive, and effective teams in the department. His focus on accountability, collaboration, and high performance significantly improved team culture and results. Whereas Ray had a sharp eye for talent and built a strong team by hiring individuals who not only met the technical demands of the job, but went on to thrive and take on greater responsibilities within the department. His legacy includes not just systems and service improvements, but the lasting impact of those he mentored and brought into the organization. Whereas he was known for his careful and cost-conscious approach to managing county resources, always looking for opportunities to maximize value while maintaining high standards of service. And whereas, as Ray enters retirement, he and his wife Kathy will return to California, where he plans to spend more time pursuing his passions. He enjoys restoring classic cars, playing bass guitar, and experimenting with his collection of vintage tube amplifiers. Though relocating, Ray will continue to visit Denton County frequently, spend time with his children, and remain connected to the community he has served for so many years. Now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Ray Rose our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Ray on his well-earned retirement, extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this is the 29th day of April 2025, upon a motion made by, motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Well, I would just like to say, Ray, thank you so much for all that you've done. You know what I love about that resolution? It talked about you building the team. You did a great job here while you're here, but you built a great team to be here after you're gone. Isn't that what we're called to do? And so I just want to say thank you for your 16 years of, of effort and time and diligence here and investing your career here in the public sector. But also you're going to have a long-lasting reach by the individuals you, you attracted and retained and encouraged to take the department to the next level long after you're gone. So thank you so much. Anyone else?
Well, I'd just like to remind you that a rose by any other name would be known as a computer genius. So thank you so much for everything you've done for us in that, in that very important area. I can't believe you want to move to California, but anyway, tell them how good Texas is, but they can stay out there. So thank you so much for all you've done, Ray, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir, for all your time, your service, and congratulations.
All right, we got Kevin Carr with us.
Quick, if you don't mind. I just wanted to thank you publicly, Ray. And you've been here for almost two decades and you helped kind of create the culture that we have in our department. Ray, for those of you who don't know, has one of the strongest work ethics of anyone I know. Like you mentioned, he, he built an incredible team. It's a relatively small team. They, they manage about 600 servers. There's not a week that goes by that they're not working a, a night or a weekend to either fix a problem or to patch a, patch a vulnerability in, in the system. So it's a lot of work, a lot of after hours. And to be able to do that for as long as you did and to keep things maintained and running as well as you have, you're very much appreciated and you're going to be missed greatly. So thank you very much and enjoy California. I'm sure he's moving back to his, his original home in California. I'm just guessing. I don't know. It's probably a multimillion-dollar, one-bedroom home, but, but, but enjoy.
Thank you.
All right, Ray, do you have any final, do you have any comments as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Kevin Carr, Brian King, and Jay Harbor for all the guidance, for hiring me in the first place, all those years ago, and for all the guidance they've given me over the years. And thank you to my team for working so hard and, and just thank you to the county in general and everyone.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, we couldn't do our, our work if it wasn't for folks like you, right? And I mean, we, regardless of all the different operations and plans that we put in place and try to execute things, we, we couldn't do it without our, our computer team. And I just want to thank you for being such a significant part of that. All right. So thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, everybody right here. All right, everybody right here. I've, I've heard them say that to get a U-Haul from California to here is about a thousand dollars and to get one from here back to California is free because they need somebody to drive it back. So it can come full back empty and so it comes back full for the next round. True. It's a true thing. You all is probably watching. Okay. Let's go to item 3B, approval of a proclamation recognizing Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force and any appropriate action. I know we've got Beth Fleming and Cheryl and Pastor Wells, if y'all want to come forward. And Marta, our longtime prayer partner, kind of our chaplain of Commissioners' Courts, if y'all want to come forward. I'll read this and then we'd love to have y'all talk about what's going to happen this week. So we're excited to have y'all back again. This is a court proclamation recognizing Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an annual observance held on the first Thursday of May, inviting people of all faiths to pray for the nation. It was created in 1952 by joint resolution of the United States Congress and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman. Whereas the National Day of Prayer allows the people of the United States to plan and prepare to intercede as a corporate body on behalf of the nation and its leaders from year to year with certainty. And whereas the act of prayer is both an expression of religious belief and an act of speech that is protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. And whereas the magnitude of America's problems within and without the, within and without the country evidence a need for divine healing and guidance. And whereas the Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force operates under the umbrella of the National Day of Prayer Task Force, which represents a Judeo-Christian expression of the national observance with the mission to mobilize Christian community to intercede for America's leaders and its families for the 2025 theme of pour out to the God of hope and be filled. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby recognize the Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force and the program scheduled for Thursday, May 1st, 2025, at noon at the Denton County Administrative Courthouse, and encourages all citizens to participate in corporate prayer for this great nation on this designated day. Done in open court, this is the 29th day of April 2025, upon a motion made by, motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Well, we are glad to have y'all back again and I would like to hand over y'all to make any announcements about this week.
Well, we want to say first that we are so thankful that we are able to meet here. And I believe that we're probably going to invade you on Thursday because the weather is looking like we're going to be in here. And it is always so special to be in this building and to be in this court and have this space and pray to our almighty God to help our country, help you, help us. And then we can do it all together. And when we all come together, it is just powerful. And people have made the comment that when we have it in this room, that they have felt very, very close to each other and to God. So we, I said, that's because there's no room. The row, we go outside. But no, I'm just kidding about that. But I really want to express my appreciation for my team. They have worked very hard to make this happen. And we have a great deal of people that are coming to pray and to be here so that we can have this day. And we thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that.
Well, I think that it's, events like that don't just happen. And so I want to thank the planning committee for all y'all's efforts year after year to make that a very special and well-attended event. So thank y'all. And I'm looking forward to being there on Thursday. Yes, ma'am. Here in the, in the courtroom. It's going to be outside, but it's going to either be raining or too wet from already, the rain that we're already.
I think the weather is going to be beautiful. It's just going to be very wet.
That's correct. Possibly.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all. We'll be, we'll be excited to come see you. All right, everybody right here. Okay. Kelsey, if you'll come forward and our Office of History and Culture team. Item 3C is approval of proclamation recognizing May 2025 as National Preservation Month and any appropriate action. Good morning, ladies. How are y'all?
Good morning. Good.
Do you want to say a few things before I read this?
Sure. Yeah. So we're here for May is National Preservation Month. And we are coming up on our, it's our fourth annual Denton Revealed Preservation Month series of events. And so we, the poster is up on the screens. I also have some posters for the court as well. But we're kicking off this month with our Dena Neighborhood Walking Tour on Saturday. This is a kind of a hidden gem here in Denton. There's a lot of really neat mid-century modern homes designed by local architects, Mount Miller. So we're going to highlight those. As well as we have a cemetery tour of the ILOF cemetery here in Denton. And then we also, you know, this reaches beyond just the city of Denton. here in Denton. And then we also, um, you know, this reaches beyond just the city of Denton. Um, we have events, uh, in Justin as well. The Justin Heritage Foundation is, uh, celebrating, um, and kind of fundraising for the, the Gaston House, which is a historic preservation project that they have in the works. Um, but of course, as part of the Denton Revealed, um, program, we have our wonderful team. Um, uh, this is Cameron Robertson, who is the Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Denton. And my colleague, Kim Cupid, who is our Curator of Collections with the Office of History and Culture. And we also have Chuck Volenger, um, who is the Special Collections Librarian for the City of Denton. So, um, that's how we hope that people will join us for these events.
Perfect. Well, I want to thank y'all for doing this and I, I believe every month is, you know, National Preservation Month. But, uh, I do want to just remind folks, you know, as you're cleaning out, you're going through things, keep the county museum in mind. You know, you're going to say, oh, well, look at these old yearbooks or look at, look at these artifacts or look at these, you know, different, different things that may not have a significance to you. Uh, if it's a local item and we'd like, we'd like to have you give us a call, we maybe can pick it up. And so we, we're always on the ask, aren't we? We're always looking to grow our collection. And so, uh, it's, it's amazing. Uh, that's one of the reasons we do this proclamation is for people to understand that we are, we're in the business of collecting things, preserving things. And we do great partners with our, our various cities across and state across the county. So, great projects. So this is a court proclamation recognizing May as National Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Preservation Month in nineteen seventy-three as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas Denton County and the City of Denton are celebrating with a series of events called Denton Revealed Preservation Month, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Preservation Month brings awareness to, of local historic properties and landmarks and serves as an effective tool for maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Whereas Denton County continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops through ongoing historic and archaeological surveys, the nomination of significant cultural resources to Denton County State National Register of Historic Places, the integration of historic elements and with, within redevelopment, and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby recognize May, twenty twenty-five as National Preservation Month, done in open court. This is the twenty-ninth day of April, twenty twenty-five, upon a motion by the chair.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, I just want to thank y'all for everything and I would like to ask people again to, if you have anything that you think it might be of a significant, um, importance, please let us know. And that's our, our whole collection is made up of people being mindful like that, people being mindful like that. So I want to thank you everybody again. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Ladies, do y'all have one of those brochures?
I sure do, yes.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Yay.
Historic bar tour?
Yes, yes.
Look at that. Ticket required.
Next, just go to item three D, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing the month of May, twenty twenty-five as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month and any appropriate action. I know we have some guests with us today. Always looking forward to this every year. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
I probably don't need this microphone. I'm Kirsten.
Hi.
I'm a, a member of Texas Confederation of Abate. Um, we're a organization that promotes legislation to the benefit of motorcyclists and we dabble in a few other areas. I'd like to talk to you about, uh, HB twenty-two, twenty-four forty, which is a bill that is actually in committee and as of the twenty-fifth of this month is favorable to come out of the House and go to the Senate. And it's a bill to prevent, um, taking away our combustion engines, which is your car, your motorcycle, your weed eater, anything that's gas. They want to try and make us go all electric.
Okay.
This bill is to stop that. So if you're interested, you can go contact your legislator, House rep, and let them know that we want this to go through.
Perfect, good. Thank you for that. Thank you for that update. We'll be happy to take that under review. I appreciate you mentioning that. Appreciate you being here this morning.
It's my least favorite thing to do.
Let's add.
Public speaking is my least favorite thing to do.
Well, you're doing great. You're doing great. Alright, so this is a court proclamation recognizing Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. And whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers. Whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and mo- motor, motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is important that all vehicles be aware of one another, learn to share the road and practice courtesy. Due to the increased number of motorcycles on our roads and highways of our state and throughout the nation, motorcycle awareness and safety are concerns for all. It is appropriate to set aside time to alert motorists to the number of motorcyclists on the roads and to help motorcyclists become aware of the ways they can promote safety. Whereas we urge all community citizens to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for riders and motorcyclists alike to give each other mutual respect they deserve. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty-five, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month and urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. Done in open court. This is the twenty-ninth day of April, twenty twenty-five, upon a motion made by Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, I just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you for, for advocating for y'all's hobby and passion. And I think it's very important and hopefully people will see this action today and other promotions we'll do on behalf of this throughout the month and they will, they will to be able, be a conscious of, of sharing the road and sharing it safely. Because I think that's what it's all about.
Correct.
So thank you. So thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, absolutely.
Look twice, save a life.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Alright. Do we have any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here. Alright, we got one on the phone here. Then one more. Perfect. Alright, do we have anyone here for item three E? Is there anyone here for three E? Okay, we'll proceed that, we'll hold that to the end of the meeting. Let's go to... We'll go ahead and proceed forward to item four A. Four A is a public hearing at, on April, the total, April, a public hearing on April the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five for approval of the replat of the Mustang Multi-Family Edition. This is lots of one R and two. This is forty-seven point three zero eight acres located. Commissioner Preseck, want to have a motion to open a public hearing?
Loop to open?
Motion to, to open a public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Do we have anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the approval of the replat of the Mustang Multi-Family Edition? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to hearing none? Do we have a motion? Oh, yes, sir. Glad you're here. I, I, glad to have you.
My name is Junior Worthy. I'm Building Grounds Committee of the Mustang Baptist Church. And we got a few concerns on what's going to happen across from the road there.
Okay.
This plat of land is right exactly across from Mustang Road, which Mustang Road is on, we're on the south side and this plat's on the north side. Uh, you know, we're concerned about, you know, I, I've worked that land for ten years.
Yes, sir.
I don't own it or nothing like that. I've worked it. I, I plowed it, uh, planted the grain, cut the grain, everything for ten years. That property runs like this and then it goes down like that and it goes straight back. And, uh, we're concerned about the water issues. We're on Mustang Water now. And, uh, it's, uh, we're on restriction half the time out there. They're going to put thirteen hundred and seventy-eight units out there, complex apartments. And they're going, uh, they're going to have some retail shops and maybe even some single-family homes. But, uh, it's, uh, I don't have, if y'all ever been out there, we got a road that goes, comes from the east and it comes right, turns right back straight to go to Pilot Point. Well, since January first, uh, week, week four last, we've had eight people run to that fence that goes into that property that y'all are looking at on the replat. Uh, infrastructure there, it's, it's going to be, I don't know what their plans are. I haven't seen all that. That, that's, it'll be a nightmare getting all that, getting all that in there. The drainage, you've got sewer problems, you know, we, you don't have.
There's no source?
No sewer, no sewer out there.
Anything.
That's, that's our biggest concern there, uh, on the infrastructure and the safety of the people that go to church there.
Yes.
You know, it's just, uh, uh, I know where y'all are sitting and I appreciate your time. I was on city council on this line for four years. I was mayor pro temp. Actually, I had to serve as mayor because we had to let the mayor go. But, uh, I know exactly where you at, what decisions you had to make. I had to make some decisions that I didn't really want to make, but growth was coming that way. And I know growth is coming our way right now too. But, uh, it's just, uh, uh, I, I actually was raised in Mustang as a kid. I've worked the land south of that property too. So I know all about the land out there. I know how the water flows and I know all the things about it. I don't know who their engineers are or what they're doing, but, uh, they need to be crossing their i's and, and, uh, crossing their t's and dotting their i's because it could be a big problem out there in the future.
Yes, sir.
I may not even be, I don't know, I don't know what the forecast is, when they're going to do it and all that, but, uh...
That's a concern also. We have no idea.
Okay.
Timeframes, what we're dealing with. That church has been there for something over a hundred and twenty-five years.
That's great.
It's a small church. I personally, my wife and I drive over eighty-mile round trip every Wednesday and every Sunday to attend there. And you want to know why? There's not very many of these whole foundation churches left.
Yeah.
They don't have big video screens. They don't have big, it's mainly elderly people, some families, some young kids we've got now, but there's not very many of them left. And can you imagine the impact that thirteen hundred and eighty-something apartment units straight across the road from you is going to have to your attendance, to your traffic, just noise in general? Would you want this built across from your house?
Right, I understand. I understand. Well, I, I want to thank y'all for being here. As far as county law goes, it's even different than municipal. It's, as far as development code, it's very limited as far as what the county can and cannot restrict. And so, um, it's, it's kind of the environment with which we're, we're operating within. It's, it's different than even with the city. And so many actions such as this are routine and customary and it's a more of an official action than, than, um, a desirability, you know? And so I just want to, uh, communicate that to y'all. Thank you for, for being here. What I'd like for you to do is not leave. I'd like for you to visit with Stephen Belknap, uh, and our Development Services team afterwards. Let, and go through, go, and he's here in the room and y'all could connect after this action. And then y'all, y'all visit and let him answer any questions you may have. And we could talk about future, next steps. Does that sound good?
Sounds good, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time and God bless all of you.
Yes, sir. God bless you too. God bless you as well. Thank y'all for being here.
And, and hopefully you understand, like Judge was saying, is we really don't have the authority to deny, as long as they're following, uh, all the guidelines and procedures and following the rules.
They understand that entirely.
Yeah, legislation has pulled, uh, authority even more so away, which little we had, has been pulled away more so. Same for the cities. And we've actually advocated recently to please stop that. And if there's any possibility to add some back, we would appreciate it. But obviously, uh, we all want small government, right? We don't want the government in our lives telling us what we can and can't do with our properties, uh, but it...
This is not close to town. It's not close to anything. It's out in the middle of the country.
Right. And, and I understand that, that's where all the growth is coming unfortunately. Uh, but, but one of the big concerns you...
I entirely understand.
Yeah, one of the big concerns you have with the roadway there, we've been discussing at length for many years, uh, since I've been on this, uh, Commissioners Court. And there's definitely plans to, to fix that in some form or fashion because it is a very, it's a dangerous, the way that's set up is very...
It's a state highway. That's their...
It is, but we have, we have a relationship obviously with the state and we work very hard with them.
Y'all got a stop sign coming down Mustang Road. They don't have one.
I know, I know.
Well, supposedly there's going to be ones added in the next few weeks. If you've had contact with the state. And every time there's one of those, people run through there, we've got a camera system there and it records it and they ask it for it. And sometimes it's late at night.
Yes, sir.
We had church service on Wednesday night and we heard the bang, bam, went out there and guess what? There are a carload of kids out there in that field out there.
Well, that was God just guys showing you some amusement for that afternoon. Hopefully nobody got that though. Thank you so much, folks. And, and Mr. Belknap will definitely be able to help answer some of those questions for you and, and give you a little better timeline of what he understands is going on out there. Is that, is that okay, gentlemen? And I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I do have Mr. Belknap in the back there at the left. He'll be happy to speak to y'all. Anyone, anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the replat? Yes, Mrs. Melinda.
Let me ask about that. I've had several people talk to me about the lack of water in that area. And even I was at a meeting and they were talking about, um, turning on the faucet, not having any water. Is there any way that we could address that from a water standpoint? I know we're having a crisis in Texas. Ben and Austin hearing all about it. But is there any way that we can kind of slow things down just to see, uh, you know, how they are going to be able to supply the water for those homes? uh, you know, how they are gonna be able to supply the water for those homes? But also the businesses and the other things around there. So that would be my, you know, if we could have that.
Sure, sure. Uh, one of the things that the, the county did many years ago, when I first came on the court, sometimes working on, right at the beginning, was we worked and advocated for the construction of Lake Ralph Hall, which would help the opportunity, which will supplement our lakes here. And so that, that, that lakes and we've all been out there and toured that and it's in, it's, um, under construction right now, you know, so that will help continue to, to help supplement. It won't be able to probably, depending on the rate of growth that we have, you know, just to be, to be determined. But part of that, about the, uh, long-term sustainability, but that we are trying to close that gap. And that's part of the water infrastructure. In Texas, the water planning process is a fifty-year horizon. So it's, it's, you're planning for, for infrastructure fifty years out. So I appreciate the legislature. I believe they're, it's an actual item that they're looking to, to take action on this year is to, is to advocate for new, new additional water resources. But Lake Ralph Hall will help to close that gap once it becomes online.
And I, and I would like to add, Judge, that, uh, you've advocated for some innovative ways to recharge our wa, our water, uh, obviously reservoirs below. Um, and we've got some pretty neat ways of doing that with, uh, the outer loop that's gonna be proposed to be put in. And so there's some, uh, things that we're obviously trying to do because we understand it's an issue. So, thank you, ma'am.
Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
I have recently become aware that there is a state Trinity River Authority. And it is including, uh, according to its bylaws, it's including all the counties that are affected by the Trinity River. However, even though Denton County is mentioned there, Denton County does not have a representative on this board. And so that's something, Brooke, I hope maybe we can look into and ask the legislature to fix that. We're very affected by the Trinity River here in Denton County. So there's lots of, of water issues coming into play. Melinda, thank you for bringing that up.
Move to close.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, do we have a motion for action?
Move to approve.
We have motion for approval by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Will you second that? All right, I'll be happy to. All in favors say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's go to item five A, approval of the bill report payments from C S D, community corrections, T I P, sheriff's training, sheriff's forfeiture, V I T, interest in D A, forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Good morning.
Good morning. We have two additions this week. The first one is the J Co. window coverings for twenty-three hundred and the second is to Dawn Way in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Perfect, move a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of purchase of vehicles for fiscal year twenty twenty-five as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-six in an estimated amount of two million seven hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars through various cooperative contracts and I T B two-three-two-seven-nine-seven fleet vehicles in appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion?
I do have a discussion.
Yes, please, sir.
Um, you know, with the, the cost of the vehicles and, and the amount of our investment, um, I do want to ask uh, Gustavo a little bit about the, the, uh, our, our, um, insurance coverage that we currently have. Because I think we're self-insured, if that's correct. And I'd just like to understand a little bit better, uh, you know, because the costs now are not forty and fifty thousand for vehicles. We're up to eighty thousand for a vehicle and then, and I'd just like to have some, uh, information on that, if you could, please.
Yes, sir. So today, we don't have really a policy about what type of insurance we place on the vehicles. But the process that we have, have in place forever is that any vehicle that is two years of age and less, plus twenty-five thousand dollars value will have full insurance.
Okay, full coverage.
Anything else will have liability only insurance.
Okay.
So that means that any law enforcement vehicle today only carries liability insurance. And you are absolutely right with the prices of the vehicles. Uh, do we want to review and see if, how much it will cost to insure those vehicles with TAC? Uh, I, I will, we don't lose that many vehicles every year.
That's what I was gonna say. It's, it's a business decision based on how many vehicles do we actually end up covering as the county? How much money comes out of our pocket each year for this versus what it's gonna cost us to insure them? So that's what I would like to see, so I can share that with the court members, so we can make a, an educated business decision, uh, because financially it may make sense to say, okay, we, we, we know we may lose one vehicle a year, but that dollar amount to replace that isn't as much as it is to cover that insurance policy. Does that make sense?
So I have been inquiring with TAC. They offered one thousand dollar deductible for full insured vehicles or twenty-five hundred dollar deductible.
Okay.
Depending on that and depending on how many vehicles we want to insure with full insurance, uh, the premium will be what they will base it on. So I will need guidance from the court of, do we want to cover every single vehicle or do we want to have a, a year?
No, I would, I would suggest we would definitely want to cover our, our newest vehicles, uh, especially all the ones that we're buying, you know, the, the newest ones in maybe two to three years, uh, uh, after that. And then from there forward, you know, anything that drops. And then again, I think you gotta have to get with, uh, Mr. May because it's how we depreciate these vehicles as well, uh, as, as, as far as how we wanna cover them. So I think there's some, definitely some work that needs to be done. And I would suggest we would want the one thousand or the twenty-five hundred. Personally, I think we would want the twenty-five hundred to lower our, our cost as much as possible. So, uh, and if that's all they, if they offered a five thousand dollar deductible, I'd like to know what that looks like, too. Again, it's gonna be dollars and cents based on how many oper, how many times that we actually have to replace a whole vehicle versus just the little small incidences that we have that cost us two, three, four, five thousand dollars here and there. But I would like to know what those dollars are and what that looks like.
If I understand this correctly, you are asking me to quote from TAC any vehicle pretty much twenty-twenty-three and up?
No, that, that would be my suggestion. Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
What about liability insurance?
That, you have that no matter what. We don't have a choice.
All of the vehicles have liability.
Every one of our vehicles has liability. Yes, ma'am.
This is more about protecting our own vehicle.
This is, yeah, protecting our assets personally. Because we, right now, we cover the majority of those vehicles ourselves, self-insured. Uh, liability we have through, I'm assuming, TAC.
Thank you.
So, yes, ma'am.
That's good.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I, I will, I will get a.
Okay, if you have a question, please feel free to reach out. Sorry, Judge, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that we have that discussion.
That's what it's about.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Let's continue over to six B, the Vehicle Assessment Committee Policy. Approval revisions to the Vehicle Assessment Committee Policy as recommended Vehicle Assessment Committee in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C. Approval Law and Reference Subscription Agreement for Westlaw Online Patron Access for the Law Library from Thompson Reuters West Publishing in the amount of three hundred and three thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents for a thirty-six month term through the Texas Department of Information Resource D I R Cooperative Contract D I R C P O five-two-five-eight.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D. Approval of renewal for I T B two-three-two-seven-four-seven printed materials to Gainesville Wholesale Printing and Packing, G P C T X L L C in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C. Approval to enter into a Cisco Enterprise Agreement through Presidio Holdings Incorporated, an approved reseller of Cisco in the, in the five-year estimated total amount of three million five hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources D I R Cooperative Contract D I R C P O five-three-four-seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six F, approval of award of I T B two-five-two-eight-six-zero Rector Road Bridge Renovation to Two L Construction LLC.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna pull item six G for now. Let's go to seven A, Report for Miss Lane's Equipment and Software Services Presented for Recording Purposes Only, Mr. Hernandez. Nope, this is not you. This is, that is not you. Excited about H R today. Next is seven B. That's just presented for recording purposes only. Next is seven B. Approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero nine four zero for the law enforcement facility real allocate one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars from capital equipment to Miss Lane's building maintenance to cover the cost of replacement air conditioner systems previously approved by the Sheriff's Administration Building and the Criminal Investigations Division Building.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven C, Approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero nine five zero for the Technology Services Department to transfer one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars from countywide technology, technology equipment at five hundred eleven thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars from technology capital for a total of six hundred and forty-six thousand and eighty-two cents to Technology Software Services to fund the Cisco Enterprise Agreement for subscriptions to services, support services, and hardware purchases and secure immediate and long-term price break savings in any appropriate action.
Judge?
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, let the record show that it's, uh, six hundred and forty-six thousand and eighty-two dollars.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is on seven D. Approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero nine eight zero to transfer from General Fund County Vehicles Unappropriate Contingency to various vehicle line items and from Road and Bridge Fund County Vehicles Unappropriate Contingency to various vehicle line items for the purchase of vehicles in fiscal year twenty twenty-five as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the amount of two million seven hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and six, sixty-three dollars and to transfer from General Fund County Vehicle Unappropriate Contingency to various vehicle line items for shortages for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five vehicles in the amount of eighty thousand and twenty-five dollars for a total amendment amount of two million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight A, Report for Human Resources Regarding Hiring Actions of Elected Officials. This is presented for recording purposes only, Mr. Hernandez.
Judge Commissioners, we have two promotions in the county clerk, one lateral transfer in the district attorney's office, one new hire in the district clerk, one new hire in juvenile probation. We have five new hires and four promotions in the sheriff's office. Four of those are detention officers. One. That's it for this week.
All right. Thank you. That is for recording purposes only. Next, let's go to item nine A. Or Report of Amendment Number Two to the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six Immunization Local Grant Program Contract between the Texas Department of Health and Human Services and the Denton County Public Health.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen A, Approval of Setting the Fee for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Tax Collection Contracts with Other Taxing Entities at a Rate of a dollar forty-one per parcel in any appropriate action.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? I want to thank our, our new Texas collector for mindfully going through and allocating all these costs appropriately. And I, Dawn, I think you're doing a great job. And I appreciate you going through and, uh, making sure this is an accurate, uh, collection contract. You did a really, do a really good job with this, Stacy and your whole team. So, uh, we have a motion and a second. All, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dawn, for all your good work. Next is thirteen B. Approval Request for the Texas Controller of Public Accounts to disperse Denton County's portion of unclaimed capital credits received from electrical cooperatives in the county service area for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five in any appropriate action. The chair move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A. Approval of Right-of-Entry Agreement between Denton County, Texas and the U S Army Corps of Engineers for the Shady Shores Road Project from West Shady Shores Road to Swisher Road for track M one-one-zero-one-two whereby the Right-of-Entry Agreement grants Denton County an immediate right-of-entry to construct and maintain roadway improvements in conjunction with the Shady Shores Road improvements for a term of one year ending on April the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. There is no cost associated with the Right-of-Entry Agreement in any appropriate action.
Move, second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen B, Approval of Interlocal Cooperation Agreements with Denton County, Texas and Rockwood Municipal Utility District Number One, Denton County, Texas, the District in Fire Protection and Emergency Ambulance Services, the I C A. Any appropriate action?
Judge, I'm thrilled to, uh, move through.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item seventeen, Community Updates.
Thank you, Judge. Um, I want to congratulate, uh, Denton Ride High Alumni Billy Bowman, Jr., who was drafted in the fourth round by the Atlanta Falcons. That's pretty cool. That's all I've got.
Perfect. Love that draft news. Okay, Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, I saw yesterday that there are seven, uh, North Texas area teams moving on in baseball. Brian, I cannot believe you didn't mention that.
Hey, that, I left that to you today. See?
Thank you. I do know.
We gotta share the love around here.
Yeah. Anyway, congratulations to all those teams and we hope they do very well.
That's right.
Um, here in Denton, we've got Twilight Teens going on, Courthouse on the Square, uh, May first, six-thirty. They're gonna have a mariachi. I don't know that word, but I think it means corcan. Then they're having the Red Bud Festival on May fourth, uh, at the Cit, Denton Civic Center. They're gonna have vendors with trees and plant sales, gardening supplies, et cetera. And then in Flower Mound, um, and I know I can't do all of them. Commissioner Mitchell usually has more of these than I do, but I'll give you the ones. I've got Lakeside Music Sessions, May second, from seven-thirty to nine-thirty at Lakeside Parkway. And it's gonna be the tenth year of this music series on Friday evenings. On May second, they're also gonna have concerts in the park. They're gonna have a nineties party band at Heritage Park, a family-friendly live music event. And then they've got on May third, Bike with the Blue. And this is gonna be on Lakeside Parkway. It's a five K run, a civilian bike race, a kids' ride with police, a photo booth games and more. Sounds like a really good interface for the blue and for the public. Trophy Club, Club is having their National Day of Prairie Event, May first, from twelve to one. Uh, and it's gonna be for Roanoke Trophy Club in Westlake. And then they've got a hazardous waste community cleanup, May third, from eight to twelve. Convenient way for residents to discard their unwanted has, household hazardous waste. That's all I have, Judge.
Perfect. Thank you. I want to remind the public that the polls are open today. Today's the last day of early voting from seven to seven. And your polling location can, can be found at votedenton.gov. And we do have our May joint election on this Saturday. And the polls are open from seven to seven. And so voting is in your designated precinct and information can be found again at votedenton.gov. And I'll remind everybody again to come out this Thursday at eleven-thirty here to the courtroom of our, our seventy-fourth Annual National Day of Prayer, which will be held here.
Judge, could I, uh, piggyback on what you said? I have checked and the voting, the early voting is down tremendously on these municipal elections. At one of my little, uh, communities, only thirty-two people have voted so far. And that's just not acceptable. Now, out at Ropes, somewhere I live, we've had a good, strong vote, but it's because we can go right there and vote. And so uh, at any rate, uh, I sure would encourage everybody to get out and vote. You have, uh, the last day of early voting, I believe, is today. Is that correct? And then you'll have to go to your precincts to vote. But it's so worthwhile. These are people that want to serve you locally. And it's from these people that we see others rise to run for county commissioners, city councils, um, state reps, even Congress. So please go vote. Let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, let's go back and finish up a couple of items here. Let's go to item two, which are considered agenda members. Are there any items you'd like to pull off of our considered agenda to have a motion to approve as presented?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our considered agenda, they consist of item two A, Approval of Order Making Appointments in Any Appropriate Action. Item two B is Approval of the Budget. Approval of Order Making Appointments in any appropriate action. Item two B is Approval of the Budget Member Request one zero zero nine six zero for Chopper, Extra Services to Transfer Center forty-two dollars from training and education to hospitality supplies to cover the cost of food purchase for training events. Item two C is Approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero nine seven zero for the Tax Assessor Collector to transfer five hundred dollars from ministry supplies to the county promotion for additional funding for the employee engagement event items. And let's go to item three E, which is Approval of a Proclamation Recognizing May ninth, twenty-twenty-five as Child Care Appreciation Day in any appropriate action. And this was, this was a proclamation that Commissioner Mitchell had put on the agenda and we're going to go ahead and read this today. This is a court proclamation recognizing May the ninth, twenty-twenty-five as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day. And whereas family childcare is, is quality early childhood education and a valuable investment in our children's future. Whereas Family Childcare Professionals Day in a port, play an important role in cultivating, supporting and educating young children in a warm, loving and culturally competent environment in a home-based setting to meet the needs of families. Whereas Denton County Commissioners Court recognizes family childcare providers as an essential workforce for our economy that allows families access to the care needed so they can work. Whereas by calling attention to the importance of quality childcare services for all children and families in our community, Denton County Family Childcare Providers are working with the National Association of Family Childcare and other organizations statewide to enhance the quality and availability of such services. Whereas Denton County Commissioners Court joins families and organizations nationwide in recognizing family childcare providers, teachers and educators for their efforts in caring for the children of working parents in providing them with exceptional early childhood experiences in their home. Whereas Denton County residents are encouraged to recognize family childcare providers throughout the state for the dedication to providing quality care, learning services and for the important role they play in our children's future. Now they're, now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, proclaim May the night, twenty-twenty-five as child, uh, Provider Appreciation Day in Denton County and encourage all reses to recognize the contributions of childcare providers to our communities. Done in open court, this is twenty-ninth day of April, twenty-twenty-five, a motion, upon a motion by the chair. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm holding back the sneeze. All right, let's go to our executive session today. We have two items. Two items today. One is fifteen A, Texas Government Code five-five-one-zero-seven-two. Deliberation regarding real property, closed meeting to deliberate the purchase exchange, lease or value of real property. If deliberation at open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of a governmental body in negotiations with a third person. And fifteen B, Texas Government Code five-five-one-zero-seven-one-one-A, consultation with attorney, closed meeting with a governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplating litigation regarding two-five-three-five-eight-five-four-four-two Rodolfo G. Rosa versus the state of Texas at all in the four hundred and forty-second District Court of Denton County, Texas. Any appropriate action? And it is ten-eleven, we are executive session.